Six o'clock, let's call this meeting to order. First on the agenda is approve meeting agenda from last week.
Let's make a motion to be approved of the meeting agenda from last week.
The second?
Start up.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is presentation. Board member comments? Do we have any comments from the board?
Just congratulations to everybody. I think we'll probably be honoring some people today, but all the students that are part of the governor's programs. There are several, so congrats. That's so great to see so many different students at that damn school that are involved in that, so well done.
Dr. Ross, do you have any comments?
Very few, but I do have a little bit. I just want to say it was great to see that we had an amazing prom. And the students looked like they had a great time and it was safe. So kudos to DeMuhausen Leadership for making that happen. Really wanted to say big kudos to following Dr. Lucetieri's comments around the governor's programs from the arts to art to leadership. All the programs, just amazing to see that we had the kind of representation. I think it goes to show just the investment of our programs across the district. And finally, we want to just say a big kudos to Dr. Lucetieri for completing her terminal degree. So just those are really lovely. And lastly, I'm sure we'll make a comment, but it's also really good to see that Coach Mason and Love were recognized as Kentucky All-Stars. So that was very important to see as well.
Okay, let's start with student recognition. And we would like to start with Bate.
Is the mic on? Will be.
My students will come on up.
This used to be my time to shine, swear. Thank you.
My students that are here, do you all want to come on up and collect a piece that I will talk about?
Oh, it's on now.
All right, first I would like to recognize Ms. Ava Carpenter. Ava, guys, watch them come all over here. Ava represented Bates at the state academic competition recently in composition and language arts. So congratulations to Ava. Let's get to these guys. Okay, I'm also going to recognize two young men that are on the wrestling team. First of all, I'd like to recognize Bryston Caldwell. Bryston was a
Three times a month?
State winner for youth state wrestling championship. Congratulations to him. He's got to get to the track meet, so we'll excuse him, head on out. And next, I would like to recognize Chase Lopez, also for wrestling tournament. He was fourth placement. I'm going to have three other students, I don't think they're here tonight, but I would like to recognize them. They are currently leading our live school points. So I'd like to recognize Hendrix Elliott for sixth grade and Shaden Brown for seventh grade. I believe he's at the track meet, and Mason Vess for eighth grade. So what that means is that those students are leading in live school points. Our live school, that is a program that we use where students get points whenever they do something at the school to show responsibility or respect, follow school rules, going above and beyond, and living straight against citizenship. I do have one more, and I guess Leila's not here. Leila Bass, I would like to recognize her tonight for outstanding leadership in the school. This young lady, every single day, leads the pledge. And if she doesn't lead the pledge, she makes sure that someone is there to lead the pledge for us. Sometimes she'll get volunteers, different students in the school. And no one really asked Leila to do this, she just kind of took it on her own initiative to start doing this. And it's just kind of been something that she's continued throughout the year. And she demonstrates excellent leadership throughout the building in numerous ways. So I would like to congratulate all of these students for their athletic, academic, and behavior at Bates Middle School. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Levin, I think you're next.
Good evening. We're going to add, Mr. Hublin's going to help me because we have so many that we want to recognize today. So we're so proud of our students here at DeMuhausen High School. Welcome to our high school, and we're going to celebrate these kids for all the amazing things that they're doing. Starting with our recipients of the Governor's Scholar. And so first, we'd like to recognize Kendall Carver. Kendall's at the tennis match. Jackson Irwin, another tennis player. Evan Sanders. Carson Watzel. All right, those are our Governor's Scholars. Next up are our Governor's Scholar for the Arts. Starting with Emily Bowman. Next up, London Jackson. And Carmen E. Phillips. And Anna Sparrow. The fun part is, if you ever sneak over here in the afternoon, because it's sick your head in grave in hall, you'll see these young ladies on the stage performing, it's fun to watch, especially when they get after it with each other and Mr. Rickford goes with them. So it's fun to watch you all. Don't let me forget, Sam Wilson. All right, we're going to shift gears now. Before you all go, one more round of applause for our amazingly talented young man. All right, this young man that we are extremely proud of, we announced, and the funny part about it is we found out, we announced it on the afternoon announcements, but the internet was delayed, so he didn't get to know about it until I caught him in the hall. And I was like, aren't you excited? He was like, what? What? So our Governor's Scholar for Entrepreneurs is Mr. Henry Pennington. All right, we're going to transition into the STLP Challenge. Now, Mr. Bowman took a group of talented young folks up to Lexington. I think it was one of the largest attended STLP conferences in the history of Kentucky, in the history of STLP in Kentucky. And we had a two-time state champion, so they went back to back. So without further ado, we're going to introduce this group, if they're all here, and we're going to start with Theo Ums. And Lyda Ums. Mary Plow. Gavin Watts. And Ella McAllister. Come on up here, Mr. Bowman. You know, tell us the stories about how hard it was and all the different challenges you faced.
That's right. So this is the Kentucky Cinemania Challenge. And it was like Monday, they released the elements, and there was probably like six to eight different props. There were two sentences dialogue, and there's probably three or four situations. And then they have 48 hours to create a video. And they came up with the story, the script. And the thing that sets them apart, for sure, is their cinematography. After I watched it, I was like, Theo, did you use some filters? Because it kind of looks like Texas Chainsaw Massacre. Yeah, that's exactly what I was going for. So, and I was lucky enough to actually get to be on the judging committee. I just sat there real quiet and let everybody talk about how fantastic these guys are. So that makes me kind of feel, you know, proud, because I've known them since kindergarten. So they're fantastic kids and wonderful students, and they're great artists as well.
All righty, we're going to transition into some awards for TSA. And Mr. Wetmore, if you don't mind joining, I'd greatly appreciate it. First up, Certificate of Excellence for state competition semifinalists, Carmen Phillips. While she's here, we'll also do TSA state competition video game design semifinalist, so you had two. Next is TSA competition video game design semifinalist, Carson Wasdell. Next, we have TSA state competition manufacturing prototype semifinalist, Cora Ilbeck. Got a lot of involved students. TSA state competition manufacturing prototypes semifinalist, Hyrum Swing. TSA state competition photographic technology coding semifinalist, Jackson Irwin. Lot of tennis players. TSA state competition photographic manufacturing prototype semifinalist, Jacob Arrow. TSA state competition coding semifinalist, Tinoyn Koch. All right, we've got more from TSA. Kayak Team Design, Construction, and Racing, third place, Zachary Adams. Kayak Team Design, Construction, and Racing, third place, Andrew Hawkins. Kayak Team Design, Construction, and Racing, third place, Captain Joseph Green. And lastly, Kayak Team Design, Construction, and Racing, third place, Hyrum Swing, Patton.
All right, so this was Technology Student Association State Conference. We had a variety of events. Kayak, of course, general items were really prevalent in that one. But there's over 1,400 students that competed, and events that we did, the coding, the video game design, kayak design, CAD, and a variety of things. We've had a great time, look forward to going back next year and improving on what we did this year.
Congratulations to all. That is all from DeMuhausen High School.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the day, or you can go home. If everyone's had a chance to look at the personnel notifications, do we have a motion to approve the personnel notification?
Make a motion to approve the personnel notifications as they are presented for March 23rd.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if everyone's had a chance to look at the April 17th and March 27th minutes, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any further comments? No? Okay. I would be presentation.
So, I'm pretty committed, Chair is not able to attend because of a
Tennis match?
Soccer. But I also have to admit that I didn't ask her to Friday, late Friday evening. So, because it was one of those things that we just kind of thought of at the last minute. So I'll issue a clear present for DeMuhausen.
Thank you. Okay, we have reports, staffing report.
All right, let me get my camera here.
Okay, so there's several things on the staffing report tonight that we're going to ask for approval for. First thing is a change on our salary schedule. This is something we've had in the works since the beginning of the year, but since we had turnover with the finance officer, we hadn't really talked about it since then. But we're looking to increase the index of the finance officer position from 13% to 18%. And what this does is it puts it in line with the other directors at Central Office. They're at 18%, so it's just keeping everything uniform. So that's one of the things we're asking approval for tonight. We're also asking approval for two SRO positions. If you remember, we discussed this in the last work session. These positions would be for the toddler and hogs at campus. And with your approval tonight, we will work with the police department and get you an MOA or whatever we need to sign at a later meeting. The other ask tonight is for one homebound teacher. When COVID started, we kind of did away with our homebound position because we were all at home. And now that COVID is somewhat over, we're seeing the need. We have one more students who need these services. This year currently, we are working with each school, and they are providing teachers who are being paid extra to work with our homebound students. But we're running into issues where, you know, teachers are so busy, we're running into issues of finding enough people to cover all of the services that need to be made. So we're going to ask for a district position. We've had this in the past, and this person's sole job will be to work with our homebound students, and they'll have a caseload. We've spoke with Mr. Ballard, and our caseload is steady throughout the year. So, you know, there'll never be a time when this person won't be needed. And then if we have the overflow, we will work with the schools and try to get some teachers to fill in and stuff.
Are these homebound students, they ever cause some medical issues?
Could be medical issue, could be other issues. Mr. Ballard, do you want to do that?
Medical, it would be the reason.
Okay, medical is the number. And then the last thing, and this will be paid out of special ed funds. Ms. Robbins is asking to contract with an outside agency, Sally Miracle's Special Education Consultant. And she is going to come in and work with a few of our students at one of our schools who need some extra supports. And this is just a temporary contract up to 10 days, just for the rest of this school year. And then I failed to mention the funding sources, but you can see those in that column. So any questions?
So we were going to have somebody let us know how we were with finances as far as the SRO positions. Is that something?
Yeah, so Ms. Wilson and Mr. Ballard and I met earlier this week, and we talked about where we were. And there's some flex focus money that we can use that you can kind of move around and spend on school safety. And we think we have some extra of that left over from previous years, so we're looking at that. And also, we may possibly dip into the general fund just a little bit. But we felt confident that we were okay with the funding there. And again, since you all are approving the positions, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to fill them. So before we fill them, we will definitely make sure we, you know, we're on concrete footing, but we feel like we are at this point.
And then for the home hospital teachers, is that a full-time position?
It's a full-time position, and we, so far, we've estimated by the end of this school year, we would have already paid for half of the position with the services we're providing, paying teachers to do extra work. So it's really kind of like we're only adding a half a position, even though it is a full position, because that money that we're currently spending at the school level will go into that position.
And Mr. Gober or Mr. Ballard, is it true that right now we're paid around 30-plus students?
We had 30-plus students who applied for home hospitals. When they were long-term, we went ahead and moved them from high school or middle school into our anchor academy so that they could work online. But traditionally, those would have continued to have been homebound service students. We just had that additional option. Currently, though, we do have 12 students. And as I told you all earlier, if they're home, the caseload is 12. If they're in hospital, it's 15. I don't know why that's the numbers, but that's the KAR, and that's their maximum caseload. Not 12 and 15, 15, 12, you know, just home or 15 if they were in hospital.
Anyone have any other question? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the certified and classified staffing as presented?
Make a motion to approve this staffing as presented to us this time.
Second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the financial report.
Hello.
Hi.
So this is the first month that, since I came on board in the end of February, that I was able to work with the interim. Well, I think we'd had a couple of people consulting with the district to help him. But she's been signing as the acting finance officer for our reconciliations, and that's Debbie Holbrook. So I was able to catch up with her and get mostly caught up where we're at with our reconciliations. So you're going to see those reports, the vendor reports. And so she did complete them, but I was with her this month, and so I'll probably start picking those out next month for our district. Also, on the agenda, we have, we wanted to inform that I have been added a signer to the Farmers National Bank accounts for the district's funds. Those are for all of the district's accounts, with the exception of some accounts that are at Central Kentucky Federal Savings Bank. And that is also for your approval to change those signers. At this time, the current signers on those accounts are not, either not with the district, or we only have Mr. Gober. And I think that that was just sort of interim while the positions were being filled. These are scholarships account, scholarship accounts at Central Kentucky Federal Savings Bank. So they're a little bit different. We just wanted to go on to get those updated so that we could manage them. And make sure to get those checks out for the awarded students. And then lastly, we wanted to, well, actually not lastly, but I wanted to also get the board's permission to open up an invitation to bid for our banking depository services, just to get us in, just to stay in compliance with the school management policy 04.2, which it has to be done every two-year period. So that'd be for the 2023-2025 period. And finally, wanted to advise that in response to our audit, we have increased our purseware footage, cost replacement services, or cost replacement figures based on the KDE guidelines on our current insurance policy that's effective 4/1, and will carry out through this current policy, which ends June 3rd.
So if anyone's had a moment to look at the, do you have anything to point out on the balance sheet or the?
Payment invoices is included on your agenda as well.
Have you guys had a minute to look at? Well, then we need a motion to approve the financial statement as presented, please.
Make a motion to approve the financial statement as presented.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we'll need a motion to approve the, that added, or names for signatures at Farmers National Bank.
Make a motion to approve the CDOs that are financing accounts.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we'll need, I guess, the Federal Savings Bank CDs?
Those are the scholarship.
The scholarship, okay. I'll need a motion for that.
Make a motion that we add, what am I doing, adding a whole add current signers?
Dr. Phillips?
We identified, right, I was going to say we identified this, sorry, because I wasn't sure.
Yeah, you could. So yeah, make a motion that we update the signers as presented in June 3rd.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the bank deposit where you request for bids, we'll need a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the, so we'll state our bids.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Update on the charter, we need to make a motion for that. And we'll need to make a motion on the invoices as well.
Make a motion that we accept the payment of invoices as presented in the finance report?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Project for education.
It's me.
This is something you all do every year. Um, Project Graduation has asked, uh, the board to donate. Um, typically, it's anywhere from two to four Chromebooks, um, and these are given out as prizes for seniors after, at Project Graduation, after graduation. Um, and so they were just wondering if the board would, would be willing to do that again, and if so, I can get those ordered, and, and we can go from there. Chromebooks right now are probably around $250 each, so if, last year, I looked, in the last two years, you've done four Chromebooks, and so it would be about $1,000. Um, we can change that if you want. That's just a request they, they gave me.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Chromebook, yes, Project Graduation.
One second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The adaptive learning conference? If everyone's had a chance to look at that, if anyone has some questions?
So I don't know if you have any questions about that. This is, uh, an opportunity to take a team, actually, uh, a large team, some of which is being funded at a school level, some at the district level, to the Adaptive Schools Advanced Training Seminar. The people that are participating in that have all had the Adaptive Schools Foundation's training, and, um, this is training that will really help us to lead teams.
They're going all hours, parents?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the adaptive learning conference request.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Calendar committee. This is the... Is this for the, uh, year 2024, 2025?
Yes, it would be, in accordance to the KR, uh, KR, as we are, go ahead and review, we've already approved for 23, 24. Uh, I don't see any changes in that, and then go ahead and plan for the 24, 25 school year. And I just need an approval of the committee so we can start the work, that's all. I'll just, maybe.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the committee members for the calendar committee as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then if everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda, if you have any questions?
Have any questions?
Do you want to make a motion? Okay, do you want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as you're presented?
Yes, I have a motion to approve 70%.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What? Your favorite one? Motion carries.
Uh, maybe as, okay, so just now.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for the...